All right, we will call to order this Townes Superior Planning Commission meeting for March 1st, 2011. Professor, call the roll, please.
Chairperson John Krecraft.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Crater Sater. Commissioners Joan Eaton.
Here.
Ian Elderson.
Here.
Kent Paulson.
Here.
Alice Harden.
Here.
Bob McCoole.
Here.
Rochelle Whitmister.
Here.
Tom Ricker.
Here.
All right, thank you. Fred, welcome back to your chair.
Well, hopefully it'll be not all that long. I think the town will probably hire an assistant manager, or maybe that person will sit back here and I'll be there.
Ah, right.
We'll see how they want to look at it.
Okay. Well, we used to have you and then the attorney.
Yes.
At these meetings.
And then there may be times yet where there will be myself and the attorney.
Okay.
But we're not. Tonight is not an attorney night.
Right, no, I don't think we'll need an attorney. I hope not at least, right?
I hope not.
Okay. Item, finished item two on the agenda. Item three is public comments on consent agenda and non-agenda items. Seeing none, no public in the room, not like last meeting. Maybe we didn't have that great of an impact on them, they just felt they had to come back to talk about the Rock Creek Parkway underpass, right? Okay, well, seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the next item, item four, consent agenda. Approval of the February 1st, 2011 minutes. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I still move.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Eaton and seconded by Commissioner Ricker. Any discussion on the motion?
Abstain.
Still abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Right? Nope. Okay. Any discussion? None? Okay. All in favor? That's six yeses, right? One abstention and one absence. And I assume that means zero nays, right? So the motion passed, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to item five, discussion and recommendation regarding the Rock Creek Parkway Underpass facade treatment. Staff have a presentation?
I will start it just by saying that the town is thinking about going forward with Phase Three, or Phase Two of the Rock Creek Underpass. Kurt Kohr here from the town's public work staff is here to present the proposal for the planning commission to basically listen to and then offer some opinions about, I believe, some of the alternatives that they have, you know, in the proposal. So Kurt?
Hey Fred, just briefly, will you just remind the commission the role of the planning commission on public improvement projects?
Yes.
In our newly adopted land use code?
In your new code that was adopted and after a long discussion, the planning commission strongly suggested to the board of trustees that they have a chance to review public improvements that are basically improvements that are probably, are scheduled in the CIP, the capital improvements program, as one of their functions to review at the appropriate time that planning commission should review it and then offer some suggestions and ideas to the board of trustees regarding those improvements. And those would be major public improvements.
Is this considered a major public improvement?
It is at this point in time.
It's, actually, in fact, it's really aesthetic, so, right?
It has a major visual impact to this area. My name's Kurt Kohr, the Public Works Director for the town. Back-to-back meetings here, feel, starting to get to know you guys all day, it's great. I thought that you always had 100 people here in the room, I didn't know that it was about the Parkway, but I guess it's just us on the underpass. We presented the same presentation to the board last night, and we'll also be presenting this presentation to the Pro-Stat group as well, we have not scheduled that meeting. But, you know, my philosophy on these presentations for the projects is that this is your community, I'm trying to give you options, soliciting input, and ultimately, I think it's our goal to make decisions together, not for me to spoon-feed a recommendation to you. And I will, as we work through this, I'll try to explain kind of areas where the board had conversation and what their input was. And feel free to ask questions at any time, I like to keep this informal and a two-way conversation. So with that being said, this is the Rock Creek Parkway Underpass Phase Two of this project, and it is a 2011 CIP, it is in our approved budget for this year. Is everyone familiar with the location of this underpass? It's on, just under Rock Creek Parkway, just east of McCaslin Boulevard. Before we contemplated doing anything, this is a photograph of what we saw in 2009, this is the winter of 2009, and we took this photograph just so we could catch the icicles and give you a rough idea of where we saw water leaking continuously. And I think there were a lot of concerns surrounding the structure and its integrity, and also concerns regarding the pedestrian and bikeway there, that the water would drip on the bikeway, create some ice, and possibly create some safety hazards. So those were concerns surrounding the project. And it had been talked about historically for several years and never really been completed. Some of the concerns around that were, maybe it was too expensive at the time, or maybe there's some budgetary restraints or consideration. But it had been studied and never really carried forward, and it was a 2010 CIP, and we did kind of label that as a Phase One for the 2010 CIP. The budget for that was $80,000 at the time, and we did an RFP and got two companies that provided proposals. Bear Excavating was our lowest bidder at the time, their contract was right around $44,000, $45,000. The next highest bidder was more in the $80,000 range. So after some discussion, we entered into a contract with Bear Excavating, and through the summer of 2010 and into the fall, we worked with them to mitigate the water. Basically what we did, and I'm going to take, kind of borrow a laser pointer there. The Bear Excavating contract, basically what we did is along each joint, there are 26 joints, this is a structure made up of 26 three-sided concrete box structures. So you put them end to end, and you have a joint. Basically at the joints, they weren't sealed, or they had been sealed, but the seal deteriorated, and it's kind of hard to see, can't get a really great picture, but we basically injected a chemical grout foam type of mixture, and it goes into the voids and it expands and reacts with the water and hardens up, similar to, has anyone ever used the plumber's foam? Very similar to that. So just a little more industrial in strength. So we did that to each joint, and feel like at this point in time, we've probably sealed up 95% of the leaks you see, and we've been able to accomplish that at a cost of about $33,000 after all was said and done. One thing on these aesthetic projects that I brought up with the board is it's sometimes tough to gauge, you know, what the priorities are for aesthetic projects and how they relate to maybe an overlay, but, you know, I think these aesthetic projects, you have a huge opportunity in front of you, whether it's small or big, in that this is, most of these are a 10- or a 20-year lifespan or longer on the improvements we're about to make. And you have a decision to do a project that is going to increase the value of your community or the look, you can go with status quo and just leave it the same, or if you're trying to do a cost consideration, sometimes from a budgetary perspective, that's a good decision, but it can actually decrease the value of the community with the aesthetics and how it looks and how people perceive your community. So whenever there's discrepancies on these types of projects, I generally like to frame it in this way, and just say, hey, as a goal, as a commission, do you want to, are you okay with the status quo? Would you like to make life a little better for your community, or are you more concerned about money and maybe the aesthetics aren't as important? So something to think about. So Phase Two is what we're labeling this year, and what we are considering in Phase Two is we would sandblast the old coating. Has anyone or has everyone had a chance to walk through this area and observe what's there now? It's a stucco appearance, the coating that's there, it seems like it's more of a, has a little latex property to it, so it's peeling away, it's pretty deteriorated, I think there's some further pictures that will illustrate that. But essentially, we would sandblast off that old coating, get the concrete there cleaned up. There are some conduit and a light there that's rusted out over the years, we replace that, and also look at replacing the lighting with lead fixtures, more energy efficient. We'd also consider adding some lighting, just to give more lighting in there than what's there now. So then after that, we've considered installing the new aesthetic treatment, which is really the topic of this conversation tonight, what that should be. And, you know, if we can make all those decisions in the right timing and then the right budgets, then we would target to complete our improvements for Phase Two sometime in June or September. This picture illustrates a little better what you see where it's peeling away, and it's, it looks pretty rough, it's pretty rough. You know, it doesn't present any safety hazards to anybody, doesn't present a functional hazard, it's purely aesthetic. So the treatment options that we're looking at, when we started looking at that, our 2011 budget is $35,000, and as we look at these options, they do appear a little more expensive than our budget. We had requested a larger budget in the budget process, but just through the natural competition and other priorities, it was reduced. So that's why you see a little discrepancy there, and that kind of plays into some of the conversation the board had last night.
When you're talking about these options, those paint-water epoxy stone veneer options include the sandblasting?
They do, they do, yeah. And I kind of, I'll go into little detail, maybe it's more than you want, but essentially we're going to try and sandblast last year. We had planned on that, and we've got some direction not to do that and do it this year. The budget had already been submitted and cut at that point in time, so we kind of took a double whammy. But these prices here, the 63, 75, and 85, include that option, and they do include the sandblasting, so that is your total cost. So public art is one option that's been discussed, and, you know, that's an option we can go forward with. Cost, who knows? It depends on what's proposed and what would people like. Some things that were discussed last night around public art were looking into the high schools, the local colleges, and trying to work with them, see if they could come up with some ideas and work through maybe their art portfolios, so that could be a partnership. Other ideas were, you know, maybe we open it up as a public art graffiti wall, like some other communities have done, so those are some things tossed around on the public art option yesterday. The paint and the waterproof epoxy, you know, we had to optimize this PDF, and maybe we lost a little color, but essentially, this is a rendering of what it would look like after we do it. So this is the existing condition, and this is the new condition. The paint and the epoxy coating, you know, it's just going to clean it up, give it a real clean look. Neutral color, probably similar in nature what the existing color is of the stucco-type finish. The difference between the two, there's some nuances. With Bear's contract, when we sealed these joints, or when we went and sealed all these joints, not all of them are sealed, I said we got about 95%, so we still got some little leaks here and there. And we do have in their contract that they're responsible to get this thing sealed up. So if we let this stay in this condition for the next four years, it's in their contract that they got to get it sealed up for the contract that we have with them. However, if we were to choose to move forward with the aesthetic treatments in a more timely manner, we may void that clause in their contract, because essentially what they're going to say is, well, you can do your aesthetic improvements because that's important to you, however, I'm going to avoid that clause because now it becomes more expensive for me to adhere to this contract. So there's some contract issues there we need to be aware of, doesn't necessarily mean it's a deal breaker, but something to be cognizant of. So the epoxy coating is more of a cementitious epoxy, similar to a stucco, but it has a waterproofing factor to it. We kind of threw that option in there, because we said if we do move forward and we haven't completely sealed it up, this would really seal the deal, no pun intended. It would, it's meant, it's meant for this type of environment for positive or negative water pressure, they use it in fountains and pools, those types of applications. So that's those two options. You know, again, we're open to colors or whatnot, but, you know, I think everyone would tend to gravitate towards a neutral look or something that matches what's there.
Kurt, is the majority of that expense materials or labor? Do you have any idea?
On the, most of it's materials. Yeah, this stuff gets pretty pricey. You know, you have some cost, mobilization cost in there, but most of it's material. They move pretty fast.
More than 50%?
What's that?
More than 50%?
I think it is. You know, if you really wanted the details, I could get those to you.
Roughly, I should.
Yeah, it's more than 50% on all the options.
What's the paint option? The difference?
So it's about a $12,000 difference, but we're just looking at some sort of regular industrial-type paint.
Two coat, three coat?
Probably two coats, you know, we haven't gotten into the specification of it, but a minimum thickness.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah. And I imagine in this application, we're probably looking at a primer coat, and there's going to be some prep work on the concrete, because it's not as smooth as you think under there. So, yeah, there's prep work involved in all of this as well. So the stone veneer option was another option that we looked at, basically matching what's on the outside, wrapping it around to the sides on the inside. The top, we would still do a paint or epoxy type of coverage, and that option was $85,000. And that would be kind of just a cultured stone that we could find that would match up, so it would basically just cement it to the wall that's there. This was just another option where we tried to show some type of public art in this visual, we just kind of tried to slap in some type of mosaic mural-type look, but that, you know, that could be one idea how it might look.
Would that still require a coating underneath prior to doing that?
You know, whatever treatment was proposed is going to come with some sort of prep, probably also some sort of protective coating, if we take graffiti and all that good stuff into consideration. Kind of a big unknown there, it depends on what media they propose.
Speaking of graffiti, does the stone veneer present a more challenging option if it's, if there is graffiti put on it to clean it?
You know, that cultured stones, it's got the thickness, I think we're working with a solid cultured stone, so it's solid the whole way through, not like to haul it out where it's kind of, you have the facade and then it's kind of hollow. So, you know, you could maybe sandblast it easier than you could paint, because it kind of acts more like a rock. That question came up last night, good question. In this area, I have not seen evidence of graffiti, and there's no evidence where it's happened and been covered up, and we haven't heard complaints. It seems like it's an area that is okay and not succumb to that.
They didn't put any graffiti coating on it, though.
You could.
To help remove that.
I struggle with that stuff, I've done that before, and then had to go back with the clean graffiti, and some of that stuff works, some of it doesn't. We'd have to, we'd look at that and do some research.
Why would you go to the expense of doing the more expensive stone and then ask for a public art option?
Well, I don't, so right now, I'm just presenting four options.
But I'm asking, you know, would you do that?
Well, I think it's either or.
Yeah, so do I.
Yeah, I wouldn't, we wouldn't. Yeah, I think is that if the community said we like public art the most, we would sandblast and leave it, continue to seal up water, parallel to that, we'd go through an RFP for the public art. Or other options that were brought up is you could do stone on one side and public art on another side and mix it up, you could vary it. You could even do two different types of public art, one on each wall, so that was a good question.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Not being a Rock Creek person, so how much is this even used? Do we have any information on how much this is used, and therefore, I mean, personally, to plow a lot of money into basically a subterranean tunnel, it seems like a pretty superfluous use of money, and also if any further issues came up, and let's say in time it does start to leak again, because it is a Mother Nature kind of situation, things like the removal of brick become then much more costly in the long run to, I mean, this, you know, this is fighting Mother Nature, that's why it leaks, that's, you know, it's just the reality, and it just seems to me that it, between it being an underground feature and the most, in the case of the stone veneer, the most expensive option, and not necessarily the best option for the purpose of that, you know, when I look at it like a waterproof epoxy, that makes sense, we're trying to keep water out. So I'm just struggling to understand, and hopefully other people will consider these kinds of comments around, you got to be kidding me.
Can I take a stab at that?
Sure.
So one of the things, I mean, we use it occasionally, I mean, it is a connection to get up there without going across Rock Creek Parkway. But the other thing that probably will impact it, and again, whether we need to make it look beautiful or not, it's a different question, but is that the new trail that's, so we've got the new trail that's opened up alone behind Key Bank that runs from Colton down, and at the top of McCaslin, there's been a bit of an expense to put in a really good connector trail for the Rock Creek residents, right there at that intersection of Rock Creek Parkway and McCaslin. So that is going to be likely to be a heavily-used connection into the trail system.
Yeah.
That may increase the usage of it, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, to answer some of your questions, they're all good points. Pedestrian count, I don't have a pedestrian count, we've not done that data, it is, I think it's fairly heavily used, just from my observations, being there myself, and the managing people while we were trying to work was an ongoing challenge.
It's a bike corridor, too. It is, if you're, at least prior to the trail, the new trail that's in, a common bike route was to come off Colton, you jump over onto the path that runs parallel to McCaslin, just east of McCaslin, and then come up through this and continue on, so.
You don't want to be in the way when they come buzzing through there.
No, no, yes.
On the water issue with the, one thing I don't think I clarified, most of the water is on the top. The sides are pretty dry, not an ongoing issue there. So it is possible to incrementally treat the sides and continue to work on the top till we feel like it's to a confidence level where we would want to treat it. So we can split those two things. So what the board had discussed regarding this, and this may answer some of your questions or create more questions, I think most of them were interested in going the veneer route. There also was a lot of interest in the public art, so I would say those were the top two. There was also an interest to just sandblast it for now and work within the budget we have for 2011, which is $35,000, and continue to stop wherever water may be leaking, that last 5%. And then in our 2011, 2012 budget process, budget for the veneer, if that's the overall choice. So that was kind of the, that kind of summarizes there the discussion they had last night, so.
And in round numbers, like, how does that compare to, let's say, what the cost was to finally put drainage in the north part of Sagamore?
And that was $100,000, I think, we spent to put in the drainage.
So it'd be almost the same, it would be close to the same amount of money for that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, $100,000 sounds like a lot of money, sounds like a lot of money. When you start doing construction in the field, it's not much, it goes fast. So even the Sagamore project was, that was a relatively small project on a scale, and yeah, it's a lot of money, I'm not discounting it, but it goes.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to make that comparison between things that took a long time to get some money, that addressed public safety, really serious, you know, ice issues and lack of drainage, and then to me, it's kind of like, oh, yeah, let's make it really, really dressy, and spend almost the same amount of money as public safety issue, public safety-oriented projects that, you know, may also be kind of pending.
Sure. Do you want to go back and look at any other slides that we've gone through?
In your, in your stone veneer option, what was, what's the scope that you've included in that stone veneer option?
The, we, both sides of the underpass from the beginning to the end along the vertical wall.
Are you not also treating the ceiling as well in that scope?
Oh, we would, that would be more of a waterproof option.
But would that be above and beyond the $87,000?
No, that's in that part, that's in there. Yeah, the prices that we are, so all of these prices include treating the side, treating the top, it's got like a 5% contingency, which isn't a lot, because we've tried to kind of account for everything so that you guys can make a good decision on what you're considering.
So this deck is like hollow core planks, basically.
Is what?
Hollow core planks.
Yeah.
Right? And it's got a leaking problem between the joints.
Most likely because the mastic wasn't there when they got together.
And it continues to leak, but we got 95%.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, it's water, if you've ever tried to chase water to seal it up, it's challenging, you're not going to.
Yeah, the best solution would be to fix it from above, but instead of below.
That's, yeah.
That's kind of what I was getting at, is why aren't we fixing it on the top, where the problem is, because we're going to have this coming back.
Right, and I, it's a really good point, and I was, where I was, you know, I'm a big believer in making, don't make few problems for yourself in the future if you can, and it seems to me that sandblasting the ceiling, and then, as you suggest, continue to enforce the contract, to continue to try and seal it up is, you know, a pretty good solution, but then not, then putting some other finish treatment on there that's, may, might, at some point in the future, just peel off again, is probably a reasonable thing. You may end up with some water stains and things, but at the end of the day, you're not peeling paint off again, which is, you know, then falling into the creek and those kinds of things, right? And then, and if you, but from an aesthetic standpoint, you know, you're riding through that thing on your bike or you're walking through, I'm not so concerned about looking up and seeing the ceiling, but maybe we do repaint the walls as a thing.
Brighten it.
I have two problems, I think, with the, with this. One is that with stone veneer, one is, first of all, I don't like the lick-and-stick type of stone veneer, right?
That's the way it was described last night, too.
It is, it's, you know, it's a thin stone, cultured stone veneer, that isn't going to look as nice as the real rock that's adjacent. So if you were going to do it, I'd suggest we actually look at real stone veneer, you know, that's quarried and cut and then, you know, placed, it's basically put on the same way, but it's real stone veneer. If you're not, as you suggested, not cheapening the aesthetics, right? And so, you know, if that's really the issue, the second one is that, so I don't like the look of it, typically. I know some of the stone veneers look pretty good, but you're literally putting it adjacent to real stones, I don't like that. The second, the second thing is that stone veneer itself become, can, particularly in a place where you're introduced. a place where you introduce some water to it, then next thing you know, you're, you have a maintenance problem on a thin stone veneer, right?
Yeah, it can pop off.
And it's starting to pop off, right? And then really, the third thing is, I don't know that you really want to be riding your bike fast through the thing with thin stone veneer on it, because sometimes you do run into a pedestrian, you scrape along the side, and next thing you know, you've run yourself all the way along a thin stone veneer wall. And for the purposes of spending money, I am pretty much in agreement that there's better places to spend money than in the tunnel, that it's a functional tunnel, it's pretty from the outside, I don't think it needs to be pretty from the inside. I think the public art option frankly would actually encourage graffiti as opposed to discouraging it. So, that's my two cents on the whole, on the whole thing. I like the idea of sandblasting it, leaving the ceiling and maybe even the 45 unfinished so you can continue to do your maintenance on it. And then painting the wall vertically with either an epoxy, appropriate epoxy coating or, you know, a high performance paint of some sort that would last.
Where my point was, is we still have water coming in here. Anything you do, any topical surface treatment, I don't care, any of these three options, you're still dealing with a maintenance issue probably coming up down the road. So, you're going to, you're going to spend a lot more money to do it all over again, or you're going to spend a little money to do it over again, sorry. And that's the reality.
Well, I think there's something to say for cleaning it up along the sides, right? As I suggested. And, you know, that's fine, if that's, if that's the way the town chooses to go. But that's just my two cents on it.
Yeah, all good perspectives. And again, this is, this is all about your input. Whatever option ultimately as a whole, the board and the commissioners and Pro-Stack decide, that's the play I wrote. So, I'm not trying to push one thing over another.
I was just pointing out, it sounds like we haven't even got the root cause totally corralled.
Yeah.
That's the nature of water leaks.
I think it is the nature of water leaks. I think we've got to localize versus a global problem, so that helps. We did consider going in from the top. It's pretty pricey to do that from the top. You got to, you got a pricey median, you got to, the road needs work, so that may be a wash, but it would have been a lot more substantially pricey to go.
Grinding it down on the top, you're putting number in.
Yeah, a lot of excavation.
Five or eight years from now, put it in the CIP for, to do the top, so that.
Yeah. We'll just put a line on it and told you so, right?
Right, exactly.
Right, right. You see the results.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Kurt, we've got other underpasses in the city. What treatments exist in some of the other, are most of painted?
You know, the other ones that I've been in are down by the Community Park West East area, and that's just bare. That's just, I think, just the boxes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, to me, that seems to make the most sense, just blast it, clean it up, possibly paint the sides, but I like leaving it, I don't have any problems leaving it bare. Saves costs. You think you're entering into concrete anyway. I think the painting idea is probably just to get it brighter, but I would say most of the use is probably during the day, anyway.
What is the, the current electrical, there is halide lights or something in there now? Is that right?
I think they're just, just incandescent, sorry.
Incandescent, okay.
It's not real bright.
And you're just talking about replacing those with LED, some new LED lighting, right? It's just a little more energy efficient and long lasting and all that.
Yeah, no, no major.
It seems like a perfectly reasonable thing.
Maybe a different fixture than ones there, just kind of just a plastic.
And new concrete.
Kind of like painting or any coating might increase the luminance. In the tunnel, it's all made a little brighter. Or the way you got it right now, you got a standard rubbing patch finish, is what they call the construction on this street. Yeah, it's just sand, slurring.
The one unknown with the concrete, and just looking at where it's, the existing treatment's pulling away, the concrete's kind of in rough shape, so to sandblast, I'm not quite sure what we'll be looking at after we blast it, if it's going to.
Spalling.
Yeah.
But don't, in your opinion though, in your opinion though, you, you don't necessarily want to void that clause of the contractor's contract.
No, not right now. I like that clause.
Right, exactly. Right. And I, and I think that, that they're, the point is valid, that either, they're either going to continue in and go and do their work and the new finish be damned, right? Because you've told us, I have, you know, I've got to fit, keep fixing the problem.
With the water stopped.
I got to stop the water, right? You know, and so, I'd say we give the opportunity for the contractor to continue to do that to the benefit of the town. Because really, the struct, maintaining the structural integrity of the bridge is far more important than the aesthetics and, yeah, the aesthetics of the bridge and of the tunnel. So, trying to keep water from infiltrating is our best solution, right?
Yeah, yeah, I would agree.
Over long term.
The bridge isn't going anywhere. Those boxes aren't moving.
I just meant over time, though, you get water in there, it freezes, eventually the concrete starts to spall, you know, then, you know, eventually something's, you know, it's going to fail. That's why probably, you know, like I said, five, for eight years from now, please put in money to fix it from the top, right?
And bare excavating, I want to make sure everyone's good, this has been great. It's been great to work with, they've done a great job. It's just kind of the nature of the beast. You plug it here, it'll build up and travel over here.
And they just have a limitless warranty period.
I think it's like five years. I wish it was limitless.
It's pretty good, though. Five years is pretty good.
Five years.
Yeah.
Any other questions or did I not answer? Any other information that I haven't given you that you had wanted? Any other comments, opinions? Okay, anyone?
The coating thing, the epoxy you call it, is more a cementitious coating.
Yeah, yeah.
With cementative.
Yeah, yeah. I, yeah, I should probably just said cementitious. Epoxy generally clicks better with people, so, yeah, one's acrylic, the funnel coat's got the acrylic mixed in, I forget the base off the top of my head. And then, I mean, if you want to get real technical, we're talking about putting Seca-Flex, which is a joint compound in the joints, on top of that, so, pretty, I'm not getting into a lot of details, but we kind of, we have thought through Aquaphens to. So, I think if I heard the commission.
I don't know if we really came to consensus, really, or recommendation.
Okay. I was going to try to sum up what I thought I heard, and then you can tell me if I got it right. There are concerns about the cost of the veneer, there are concerns about moving forward too fast with the aesthetic treatment, there's, I think there's more priority on focusing on getting the water stopped. And overall, so far, I've heard more leaning towards painting or the epoxy, cementitious material. Is that right?
But from my perspective, not at the expense of, you know, stopping the contractor from doing their work.
Right.
If it's an aesthetic fix, do it on the walls, but not on the ceiling.
Right, the wall part.
Or the 45s.
Yeah.
Might be.
Right, where they still need to have the warranty, then that's like a keep out zone.
Yeah, I think the one increment, the one thing I'm hearing common thread between the board and commission is incremental improvements so that we can guarantee that we're fixing the original problem before we start to try to make it pretty.
Because cosmetically, if you spend a little less right now, it'll still look clean and the same. But you won't spend the extra $22,000 difference between that and the stone. Because you're going to do it again. Guaranteed you're going to do it.
John, would it make sense, I mean, if it's a recommendation, should we just, I mean, you probably know, but you just want to make a motion to, for a recommendation to the board on this?
What's our, what's our procedure?
I got hit with pretty much everything you said.
Well, yeah, it's just if you, the planning commission wishes to do that, to make a recommendation, you know, that's, that's what you should do, and I suspect the board would appreciate that.
Yeah, I think they would.
And I would support pretty much what you said.
Okay. And our process will be to, we'll finish here, we'll go to Pro-Stack, and then we will go back to the board, and this is what we heard, and the board will take action.
Yeah, I mean, I think our, I would, I'll make the motion that we recommend sandblasting or, you know, taking, getting back down to the bare concrete, allow for, you know, the maintenance to continue on the, on the structure. And if, if necessary, you know, if, if the, if the board is compelled to do something aesthetically, we would recommend that they do something only on the walls. And not, not do something that's going to cause long, additional long-term maintenance problems like the veneer, I think will be a problem. I think it's a problem aesthetically, so it's not the motion, but.
Do you say, do you usually recommend the paint?
Recommend the paint.
Okay.
Right? And you got, you understand the reasons.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that?
I like it.
Second that.
You got that, Fred?
Yeah.
I get that. Okay.
Like that, full on, I got three. I got sandblasting to clean it up, fill cracks under existing contract, keep working on that.
Yeah.
And then paint the walls, just basically paint the walls, and then to kind of hold off on the veneer until, what, later day or?
Yeah, until some.
Or even not do veneer.
I don't, I don't recommend any of the veneer at all.
Yeah, just leave off the motion.
That implies something.
Oh, you don't want that in there?
No.
I don't even recommend it in the long term anyway, but at least in my opinion. So, paint walls and brighten up. And no, no public art consideration, I didn't like that one either.
And are we in favor of the LED lighting?
Yeah.
You want to throw that in there, too?
Favor of the LED lighting.
Would be supportive of the LED lighting.
Work out.
You know, my own thought on, on public art would just be if it's something that is, you know, very manageable and, and, which I have no idea. I really have never delved into that, you know, into that realm. I mean, I like the idea of it being a civic participation, particularly, you know, maybe high school students and things like that, and a piece of ownership, but if it, if it's something that's actually difficult to manage, maintain, whatever, then probably take that off as an option.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, I'm sorry, I missed two seconds. Commissioner McCool?
Okay. We'd get to discussion in a second.
So, there's a motion and a second, discussion?
I guess I just threw in my discussion.
Well, I would just say that, you know, how you guys present other sort of, you know, thoughts that are coming out of the planning commission on that, about the various subjects, you know, in your, in your report back to the, to the board, you know, you can have some of these kind of talking points or something that we've talked about, or our opinion on, or opinions of the members on the various topics that we talked about. If you can capture those in some way, that's fine, right?
We have two paint options. The motion was, was favor of paint, but there's two paint options. But what I'm hearing is that probably the epoxy paint is not as critical on the walls as, as it would be on the ceiling, so maybe that answers the question, is it just paint on the side? From my personal perspective, I don't think paint is necessary at all, so I don't think it'd be included somewhere in the notes, but.
I agree with you. I don't necessarily say it has to be.
Just another level, just another level of maintenance that has to happen, yeah.
I think we've got others in town that don't have paint, they seem to be doing fine. This one, I think, is probably one of the lower traffic ones. I've been through it a few times myself, but I don't know that I'd be more inclined to go through it with paint or no.
The, you know, one benefit of the incremental approach, we're not trying to like get something done and keep moving very fast, so, you know, there will be a check-in point where we say, hey, we've, we've sandblasted.
Yeah, I think.
See how it looks, give us your input.
The finish, once you've sandblasted, may deter, help you make that determination at the staff level or whatever, whether it's appropriate or not.
I mean, your, your initial motion was if an aesthetic treatment is necessary, we would recommend paint. So, I think that's what we're saying, is if, if an aesthetic treatment is necessary, then we would recommend paint.
But the base could be inclusive of just a rubbing patch finish.
Yeah, I think, I think, exactly. I think leave it to the, to the experts to determine what that.
Yeah, the concrete guys can do a lot with base concrete.
So, if you say against staff discretion, yeah, or board, whatever.
We're just, we're just throwing out our two cents here. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Do you want to read that real quick?
You want me to go back?
Yeah, let's just read it real quick. We'd have some idea what we're going to do.
Well, the motion is basically the planning commission in favor of sandblasting this. Then, the second one would be to continue to work on sealing the ceiling, under the existing contract. The third one is if aesthetic treatments are necessary, then paint the walls. And I assume then the third one is paint the ceiling and brighten it up.
No, 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 we're not recommending that at all.
All right, so brighten up with LED lights is fine.
Yep.
And then, public art to be considered later, only if there are minimal maintenance issues involved.
Does other contractor, Baird, do they have any sandbl?
Sure. I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Baird, do they have some sandblasting at all? You know, we've talked to them a little bit about it, but I haven't gotten a strong feeling from them. I think it'd be something to sub out, so.
We'd probably just do a small bit. Is that it? That's the motion? That's the, that's the recommendation?
Yeah, that's the points that I have.
Yep, I agree. Okay, so that's your second still? Okay, all right. Okay, no other discussion? All in favor? I think it's unanimous.
That's such a good recommendation.
What's that? That's a good recommendation?
Had to go with it, make it unanimous.
Right, okay.
Well, I appreciate your time and input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
Thanks. That concludes item five on the agenda. Item six is staff announcements and miscellaneous.
Okay. Hold on. The, Matt wanted me to mention to you some upcoming events. Basically, we have a meeting the 15th of March, which is obviously two weeks from today.
Is that the 8th of March?
It is. It's my mother's birthday, so I know that one.
Okay.
So, and we're going to have basically two items on the agenda.
Okay.
Both of them dealing with the land use code. One deals with mobile homes. We've talked about that. The attorneys have, and the staff have come up with an idea about how to deal with that. And so, we'll present that and have a discussion on that. Make a recommendation to the board trustees. Then, the other item deals with basically an issue of mineral rights and also, or matters of state interest, which include now the way the ordinance is being drafted, deals with both mineral rights as well as transportation, large transportation issues. And all I, about all I can say to sort of sum it up is there's an issue has come up about possibly somebody wanting to exercise their mineral rights. Under our land use code, we have adopt, or have a line in there that gives us the ability, under state law, to inculcate regulations related to matters of state interest. And large transportation projects as well as mineral rights are on the laundry list in that state legislation, which was passed, well, I'll bet you 25, 30 years ago. Old House Bill 1041, which is way back in the seventies, as I recall. So, in order to deal with, with those issues, the, there's been, going to be an ordinance proposed that deals with those issues so that we can then have adequate local control over those, basically those two different items. Mineral right development as well, which is mining, as well as large transportation issues. So, that's about the summary of that. And so, you will be getting.
Sounds intriguing.
I have to tell you, I don't know what the word inculcate means.
Well, to me, it's to implement.
Implement, thank you.
It's probably a wrong word that I've used somewhere in the past in this context.
Sounds more devious than that. It just, it just does.
Anyway, there is that issue, those issues out there, and we want to be able to have some local control over that. And since we have that in our land use code, we now have the ability to do something, to institute a few regulations to deal with at least those two issues, so. deal with at least those two issues, so. And so then you'll, you'll get all the context of how this came, you know, why these two issues are being chosen to be dealt with as part of the presentation.
Will they be provided in the back in advance, or?
Yes.
Okay. Any other-
And, and will that be advertised, or, I guess that's part of the public hearings?
Uh, I believe so. Yes.
Okay.
So there might be people showing up who-
Yes.
-might take issue with what we're gonna talk?
There might be.
Okay.
There might be.
The inculcation of these things?
And you also, if, you know, you also have the ability to continue a hearing.
Right.
You know, as we, you know, I'm not sure, you know, how much information you want, you'll be able to absorb, or how much, you know, you want to deal with in one night, but at least those are two issues, those are the two things that are on the agenda for the fifteenth. And there's no, there's, there's no reason on our part to-
Will we have a-